Hello. Councilor Haas.
Yes, being engaged.
Hey, gather together.
Good evening, good evening. The hour of 6:00 PM having arrived, I call to order the special meeting of the Municipal Services, Facilities and Infrastructure Committee. This meeting is being broadcast live on the City of Keene YouTube channel and Channel 1302. Video is also streamed on the city's website and posted on the website by the end of the next business day barring technical difficulties. Copies of the printed agenda are available in the wall pockets as you enter the room. The public will be recognized, asked questions and make comments on the agenda under discussion. After being recognized, all remarks are to be made through the chair. We will not recognize an individual a second time until everyone who wishes to speak has. Anyone who wishes to address the committee is asked to go to one of the microphones in the room, identify yourself by name and address prior to speaking. Our minute taker is participating remotely this evening. Committee members, remember to turn on your microphones. If the minute taker is unable to hear, they will ask you to speak louder or remind you to turn the mic on. So I now call to order this meeting. I note that all five of us are present and we therefore have a quorum. So first item on our agenda this evening, thank you all for coming, by the way. We have a communication from Howard Mudge, request to remove a tree on Evergreen Avenue. So our Public Works Director, can you lead off, please?
I would be delighted to, Mr. Chair, Don Lucier, Public Works Director. I do not believe the petitioner is available to attend tonight, but we did suggest that this go on the agenda, proceed forward. I would say if the committee has questions for the demander, it would be appropriate to put it on more time, but staff's recommendation is to grant the request. So the item is, you know, is a request to remove a tree. It is on public property, it's in the right-of-way. It's in front of Mr. Mudge's home and in front of you there, you see some photos. The first photo on the left-hand side shows the view of the tree standing from the end of Evergreen Avenue looking back towards Court Street. The middle photo is standing at the Court Street end of Evergreen looking into the dead end. And then the third photo, of course, is a close-up. So what City Code says is, and I printed it out so I won't misquote it, "No person shall destroy or remove a shade tree or ornamental tree standing on any common square, street or land within the city limits without the permission of the mayor and city council. It shall be the duty of the Director of Public Works to notify any infractions of this article and report the infraction at once to the mayor and city council." So in practice, the way this has been interpreted is if there's a tree in the right-of-way that is clearly unhealthy or causes a danger to individual property or wires or what have you, we've interpreted that to mean that the Director has the discretion to take that hazard down. However, this tree is clearly in good health, it's not a diseased tree, there's no indication that it's an imminent hazard. So we did inform Mr. Mudge he would have to seek the council's permission to remove it. Along with that, he would be responsible for the cost of removing it if he would like to do so. He does want to proceed with that, it is for aesthetic reasons that he would like to take it down and it's really at your discretion if he wants to do that.
Counselor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm kind of just pulling up the original request here and I see reference also to some concern about the size of the tree and utility lines and that sort of thing. I don't, I can't really tell, it looks like maybe in that first photo over to the left, like there's, that's maybe the side of the utility line there. Is there a public safety concern here with this tree in addition to the aesthetics?
So when there's an issue with trees growing into or endangering wires, we work with Eversource, they'll, they have an arborist that they'll send out and if they agree that there's a problem, you know, it poses a risk to the wires or the reliability of their system, they will send their tree crew out to remove those, either trim the trees or remove the tree if need be. That wasn't the case in this situation.
Then can you, can you expand a little bit on staff's recommendation to move this forward in the absence of a public safety?
Yeah, so it's really the discretion of the council whether they would like to authorize the removal of that tree. I think it would be appropriate, if you were so inclined, to authorize it with conditions such as a replacement tree instead. And if that was the condition of approval, then we would work with Mr. Mudge to select an appropriate street tree that we could plant there. The city would be responsible for maintaining it in the future because it is a city, it would remain a city tree, but that would be, you know, something that you could consider.
Thank you.
Anyone else, committee? So we can, if we do want to grant this at his expense, require the planting of new trees.
You could require that as a condition of approval, yes.
The tree does not look sick at all.
No, I, like I said, it's a healthy tree, which is why we suggested he have to come here and ask for permission.
Okay, this is open meeting, so members of the public, if you want to speak, you can do that, or council workmen in the meantime.
Yeah, thank you. I just had a quick question. It's just the tree, not the stump being removed?
So if the tree was removed, they would have to remove the stump down to ground level. That's the same process that we follow when we remove a tree, we cut it flush with the ground.
Does that mean grind the stump?
It, it doesn't mean grind it below grade, it means cut it flush. You know, usually they'll, they'll just bring in a grinder and trim it off rather than, you know, try to get their saw blade down in the ground. But, you know, it wouldn't require taking the grinder and actually penetrating down in to try to remove all of the stump.
I think I'd like to see it below grade, but, yes, Laura.
This mentions the tree's age, do we have a sense of actually how old the tree is?
Absolutely no idea.
Anyone else? Looks like we're ready for a motion? Again? Yeah, yeah, replacement tree is in. I would like the stump ground, I would hope.
Okay. A move to recommend granting Howard Mudge's request to remove the tree in front of 9 Evergreen Avenue at Mr. Mudge's expense, conditional on the planting of a replacement tree to be maintained by the city.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded, anything from the public? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? We are three to one. Okay, next item on the agenda.
Four to one.
Four to one, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, this is a communication from Frederick McMillan, request to install a sculpture. If you'd like to address this, please.
Yes, good evening and thank you for bearing with us in this extended project to install a cornerstone sculpture in the City of Keene, hopefully attracting other artists that would have an interest in displaying their works of art. A letter I sent to you on May 12th, I think, speaks pretty much of what this project is about. There's one amendment, in that particular letter, we had focused on the Patricia Russell Park as the installation site, but since then, the Department of Parks has modified that site to change the location to Ash Willet Park, which I believe is a much better situation, a much better venue than the Patricia Russell Park. So we have secured a structural analysis from a certified engineer as to the stability of the structure. We have secured a certificate of additional insured, naming the City of Keene on insurance, on an insurance policy. And we have struck an agreement with the, with the artist, with Christopher Curtis of Ducksbury, Vermont, so he will be the installing party of this particular project and we're ready to go.
Committee questions? I think we remembered the discussion going in. And personally, I like the Ash Willet Park as the site, lot less concerned with the potential for vandalism there. So, any public comments or questions appropriate if you do want to come up? Ready for motion?
I move to recommend the city manager be authorized to do all things necessary to accept and install the proposed public art piece by Frederick McMillan to be placed at the Ash Willet River Park and to negotiate and execute a memorandum of understanding with the donor to include four certificates of insurance in accordance with Resolution
Second. Motion's been made and seconded, anything further from the public or committee? Seeing none, all in favor? We are unanimous, thank you.
Thank you.
Quite fast, very good. Okay, next item on the agenda, a communication from Councilor Haas, a request for historical marker, naming the Keene Bottle Works. Good evening, Counselor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ed Haas, 114 Jordan Road. This, I talked with the Yankee Bottle Club, which is based here in Keene and runs a bottle show, a historical bottle show, an antique bottle show every year in October, that's coming up, I refer you to their website and other information to find the dates and times of it. It's an exciting time if you're into old bottles and we've all used bottles in various ways, shape or form over the years and have an affection for them. So they recognize that the original site of the Bottle Works in Keene was just off the rail trail behind Public Works and they think it would be a great thing to have a sign there acknowledging that site. We do have a sign that's put out by New Hampshire DOT, that's up by the rec center, but, and that makes reference to the site that was two and a half miles south at this point, but it'd be really good to have one right on the rail trail to see how, to identify that site. And any more signs and more history to the city can always be a good thing. So I commend that to you. Alan Rumril, who we all know and respect as a historian, is in big support of this, so I hope we can do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions? Any comments or questions from the public or counselors present? Moving right along.
Yeah, okay. Move to recommend Yankee Bottle Club be authorized to design, fabricate and donate a historical marker for installation on the Cheshire Rail Trail and the city manager be authorized to all, take all actions necessary to facilitate its installation.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, anything further, public? All in favor? Unanimous, very good.
Hundred Church Street.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, next is a discussion regarding 100 Church Street, potential sale of property.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Don Lucier, Public Works Director, once again. Actually, I think I'm just going to turn it over to the, I'm sorry.
I know, that's all right. Paul Rodenhouser, 24 Pearl Street, I live here in Keene, I'm representing the landowner at 110 Church Street and 116 Church Street, as well as an interested butter at 103 Roxbury Street, MGJ Realty, and then Jiffy Real Estate LLC is the 110 property owner. Yeah, and this is in, to regard to the city-owned land at the corner of Norway Ave and Church Street. I don't know if anyone's spent a lot of time down there recently, but it's become quite a nuisance and a problem, I think not only for public safety, but the tenants in these buildings. You know, we've had tenants not only complaining about drug use, defecating behind the dumpsters, public urination, I mean, you name it. And, you know, I think the best way to address this is to put this into private hands so it can be addressed. When we first talked with the city, you know, we had a productive meeting with, with the city manager, but we were kind of going around these different options on how the city can address it. And then at the end of the meeting, one of the parties suggested, well, why don't we just purchase it? And I think that was kind of unanimous in the agreement that that's probably the easiest solution to quell this problem and, yeah.
Thank you. So, Mr. Chair, as you know, this was already before FOP, the Finance Committee agreed with staff recommendation to go ahead and sell it, but there were some concerns raised at council last week with constituents and whatnot by, I know Councilor Chadbourne expressed some reservations, Councilor Williams also spoke on the topic. So I don't have anything else to add to it at this point, but I am happy to take any questions you might have.
Okay. It is a little confusing and you sort of cleared it. There was this request that went through the Finance Committee, which recommended approval. There was conversation that maybe the neighbor should be, the neighborhood should be informed, which is why we're here. So, city manager, you got any thoughts on where we're going?
So I think our recommendation remains the same and the reason that the Public Works Director is presenting this item instead of the Parks and Rec Director is because this is not actually codified as a park. This area is under the control of the Public Works Department as other pieces that the city own, either in the right-of-way or land that the city maintains. And when we met with the neighbors, the abutting properties, you know, we discussed what sort of options might be available. We had in the room, the police department talked about activity in this area has definitely picked up and it would be unrealistic for us to think that we would be able to be there as often as they would need us to, to address some of the issues. We talked about fencing, we talked about other ways to try to mitigate the issue for the people who are living right next door to this piece of land. And when the abutters offered to purchase the property and maintain it, we thought that was a good solution. And so therefore we brought it to FOP and they agreed with us and made the recommendation.
Okay. Originally, I had always thought that that little area was part of the big brick building, going back to when Antioch University was there and that was like a nice little study area or whatnot. Antioch's not there anymore.
It was at one point.
Yeah.
It's my understanding as well.
Yeah, so times have changed. To the city attorney, would be appropriate for us to inquire as to the potential use of that property and perhaps even make it a condition of sale?
Yes, you can do that.
Okay. And to verbalize what I'm thinking, I'm weighing two different issues. One is green park, the other is housing. We keep saying we want housing. And I'm strongly assuming that the use on that property would be to put up a duplex or something of that sort. And to inquire.
Yeah, we discussed that, you know, the redevelopment of that at FOP. Currently, that parcel's about 5,000 square feet, it's in a zone that requires a minimum lot size of 10,000 square feet. So at the very least, it would require a variance from the ZBA in order to develop that site. Geometrically, I don't know that it would support a reasonably shaped duplex development. That said, you know, the adjacent property owners might be able to combine it with some of their land by doing a lot line adjustment and accommodate some redevelopment that way. I don't know what their intention is.
Okay, can you comment about that?
Safety, right now, I think, is the biggest thing. You know, no one's really using the park as, or I guess it's not a park, but they're not using that land besides for drug use, loitering and making not using that land besides for drug use, loitering, and making people feel unsafe. So, you know, I can't speak to what any future plans would be, but I think right now, it's just safety.
Okay. Best to not make a commitment then.
Right, exactly. And I mean, you know, it's really taking a burden off the city at this point.
Yes.
Yeah, I agree with the sale of the property. And I agree with the speakers have said as far as it being a trouble area. As someone who, I try to ride with the police at least three times a year to see that the sidewalks do not roll up after eight o'clock at night. And every single time I've ridden with them, this is every single time, they'll be like, "Well, let's go to 93rd Street. Here we go." Spotlight goes on, get out, arrests are made, cops off the street. Because they gotta go take, and typically, they'll have been somebody that has a frequent flyer warrant on them, and off they go. And I talked to the officer, I rode this past Thursday night, same thing. And once again, it's a small little area, there's troubles there, and it takes an officer off the street because they're making arrests. And we have, especially being a officer short, we have better things for our officers to be doing, but if they see an infraction, they're gonna enforce it. So, I fully agree with the sale of this property. It is a troubled area. And like I said, our officers have better things to do than making arrests every time they drive by that corner.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. I also support the sale of this property. The way that I see it, you know, we have a parcel here that the city owns and is currently responsible for maintaining. An offer from a private abutter to take it over and manage the security and maintenance of it, this feels pretty close to a no-brainer for me. You know, this is not the exact same area, but one of the first emails I ever got from a constituent when I got on council was about someone feeling unsafe and uncomfortable in that general neighborhood with activity behind Jake's Convenience at night. And so, if helping to clean up this area means that we transfer this property to a private owner who can enforce some standards of behavior there in a way that maybe we can't, I support that. I also, you know, want to note, because I know we're going to hear about this tonight, and, you know, I supported this coming back to committee, and I think it's an important discussion to have and for the neighbors to weigh in. And I've already received some communication, as I think others have up here from the community about this. But there is green space in East Keene that is not this Pocket Park. We have Pat Russell Park in East Keene. We have Robin Hood Park that's not too far from here. And so, my concerns might be a little bit different, or my bed, the way that I am balancing the kind of competing concerns might be different if there weren't recreation and outdoor opportunities already in this part of Keene. This just seems like a liability to the city, and I support taking it off of our rolls.
Mr. Chair, can I say one more thing?
You can speak again, and then I'll go to the public.
Well, I'd just like to, it's my understanding too, that the city, you know, to Mr. Chair's point, it was Antioch that developed it into the green space, so no city money has gone into this. You know, besides when it was taken from eminent domain at one point, I believe, but...
Okay. Open meeting. Yes.
Vicky Martin, 275 Water Street. For historical perspective only, in the middle of the eighties, 1980s, City of Keene, Antioch, New England Graduate School at the time, and Conway Landscape to School, Landscape Design School out of Massachusetts, went into a joint venture to make that the park that it is, or that it was at the time. And Tim and I actually cut and hauled sod for that park. So, I know about what happened with that park, and as far as I understand, it's always been part of the city. At one time, before most of us were even alive, that was a really nasty bar located there. So, when you start looking at the history of Keene, that park has been the possession of the City of Keene, and it was in a joint venture that Antioch, the Conway Landscape of School of Design, and the City of Keene came together to build that park. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address the committee? You don't have to stand.
I'm gonna go sit down.
Whatever you like.
Hello. Thank you for having this session together. Hi, councilors.
Your name and address, please. Name.
Name and address.
Oh, of course. Peter Hart, 12 Brook Street, Keene. I have hearing difficulties, and it sounds like I'm speaking very loudly, and I apologize if that's the case. So, about six years ago, there was an epidemic in Keene that we don't hear about that much anymore, the fentanyl epidemic. And people were dying weekly, anyway. And one of my friends, who thought that park was a very special place, and happened to be homeless, it was his little piece of green in the world. His name was Jeff Allen. He was a wonderful guy. And he overdosed. And in his memory, or in, well, not just in his memory, because one of the things that he wanted to do was improve the park, and he had planted some things himself. And I wanted to continue in his memory a little bit, and I asked the Department of Public Works if it would be okay to make a garden out of the strip of, between the sidewalk and the street, with some shrubs. And I peeled back the landscape cloth and had to do a lot of digging to improve the soil. And over the last five years, I've planted many different things in that spot, and I've maintained it. I also had another friend of mine, Denise Violet, who took over a little section where the street sign is, and she made that into a park, into a garden. Lovely, and we've had a lot of compliments about that. I've been there frequently until this year, when I lost my ability to, with my legs. And so, having been there quite often over the last five years, I've witnessed good things and some mediocrely bad things. There was, once upon a time, there was a group of older gentlemen that would sit in a sort of like a little clubhouse on that stone wall, and they would probably be quietly drinking a beer out of a paper bag. They never, Denise and I never felt threatened by anybody that's been in the park. And we socialized with them to the point where they felt like they weren't threatened by us. And we've had many, many chances of neighbors coming by and pedestrians in the area, office workers in the adjacent office building, say, "What a beautiful little park this is. What a nice place." And I think that I had something to do with that, but calling attention to it by planting the flowers. And we witnessed some really nice things while we were working there. There was a lesbian wedding with ball gowns and picture snapping, and it was just amazing during the spring when the crab apples were in bloom. And fathers and sons, fathers teaching their sons to, you know, catch a football or play with frisbees. I've seen people just pull out a blanket or a towel and lie on that hill and read a book. There've been, the people that have said that it's not being used, they probably are doing drive-bys. And yes, it doesn't look like it's been very well-used. Not there, people are not there all the time. And it, I just think that when we lose something, it's gone forever. And that is a, been a beautiful little park that was worked on by many people in the past, and it was, it's an asset. And that the difficulties that are temporarily there, I don't ride with the police, so I don't know what you're saying at late at night. It could be a different story. But it is a function of the police to police downtown Keene. And if we were to just try to chase all the homeless people or the people who are up to no good, they're gonna land someplace else. And in the meanwhile, we will have lost the park. And where will they go next? Well, it's usually someplace within walking distance of the rail trail, or 100 Knights, or Railroad Square. You pick the area, but the problem isn't gonna go away just because you've sold the park. No. Those people will find another place, and probably will be the Patricia Russell Park. I have trouble remembering the name. That probably will move over there, because it fits the bill. And it didn't, it did used to be very populated by these people. So, I think that's where they're gonna end up. And you can't solve the problem by just closing off parks. It's not done. I have a couple of questions, and I don't expect answers, but it's something to think about. My understanding is that there are two adjacent property owners, adjacent to the park, that are interested in buying the property together. Well, that's interesting. But, you know, I was a landlord once too, and I have property in Keene. I don't believe, in my heart of hearts, that the property owners intend to keep that as a park. It's an added expense. I believe that it will be fenced off. It won't be used by anybody, and very soon, one property owner might sell to the other property owner, so that the lot is continuous, and then they can change the lot lines, just as the gentleman mentioned earlier, and a development will eventually go in there. Now, housing is used as a major reason why this property needs to be developed. However, if you look around Keene, I could find you ten better places to build than that lot, which is already developed as a beautiful park. There's a lot right up Church Street that's been empty. It's almost about the same size. It is adjacent to the Pat Russell Park, and that hasn't been developed. So, I'd like to know also, before the deed, the sale is completed, which I think probably will be, has anyone looked at the deed? Because that property wasn't always city property. And how did it become city property? I know that, I understand that Antioch developed it. It was under my impression that Antioch owned it. And if they were gonna deed a park over to the city, there might have been some contingencies. The deed needs to be examined to see that it's really a clear deed. I think that's about all. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for your comments. I'm sure the city attorney and city manager will confirm the deed. Yes.
I wanted to just point out, the plantings and the flowers are actually not included in the transfer. And so, this picture might help you visualize, those are closer to the sidewalk. It's a separate, yeah, I think that's the area he's referring to in terms of the plantings.
That's like saying that an arm is an arm and not part of the body. The plantings were intended to be a beautification of the park.
Got it.
Yep.
Okay. Anyone else on the committee? Laura, please.
I just want to say, I really appreciate how many people there are that have invested time and energy into making the spaces around them more beautiful. I love when I walk around and I see the little areas being taken care of, little parks, little plantings. I know a friend of mine grew up in the housing that's right near there. And when I think about kids growing up in that building, I do feel especially concerned about the safety in the areas surrounding that area. You know, not being able to go outside and have their parents trust that they'll be safe as they cross the street. So, I do feel really, and I guess having seen how difficult it is to deal with some of those persistent drug problems in a specific area, when something becomes a hub for that, I think it's really difficult for the police to respond to that over and over again, because if it's a public space, they really have to catch them in the act of doing something. So, I guess that'd be it.
Bobby, did you want to speak?
I do. Bobby Williams, 66 North Lincoln Street, also Ward Two Councillor. I do not support selling this park, at least not yet. I mean, I think we should try some other things before we take what I think would be a pretty drastic step of privatizing a public park. There are some simple steps we could take to make it safer. The original request was for some fences. I think a fence between the park and each of those properties that it abuts would make a lot more sense, and it would discourage people from hanging out there, because it would be less, shall we say, easy to escape when you get seen. So, perhaps that would cause less of the activity that we don't want there. I would also say that, you know, there's a big berm in front of that park that kind of hides what's going on there. And it would make a lot of sense to me to cut down at least part of that berm, so that you could see into the park, and people can't hide there. For, you know, it's very important that a park have engagement with the area outside the park, so that people walking by can see what's going on, so that they feel like they're invited in. That park doesn't do that right now, but it really could. And then, one more thing we could do, you know, we talked about the issue late at night, how hard would it be just to put up a street light that has a motion detector on it and goes off when someone's down there, so that people aren't gonna be hiding down there? These are some steps we could take, you know, tomorrow, and not, if they work, great, we've got a park, we can keep it. Maybe we can find some more ways to engage with it. It was a little disturbing to me to hear that it's not part of the park system we have in Keene. I think if we have land like that, you know, really kind of we figure, we should figure out a way to have it be part of the park system and have some programming. That's another thing. But, you know, this is a, this is a green space in a tough part of Keene. And yeah, there's other green space in Keene. Pat Russell Park is five blocks away and in the other direction. But everyone who works on, lives on Church Street and walks downtown to go to work, they walk past this park. This park could be something that engages them, something that gives joy on the way home, a good thing for the community. And I feel like if we, if we give it away, you know, if we give away the opportunity to keep it, or not to have it walled off, you know, it could be turned into, could be turned into parking lots in 20 years. I'd hate to see that. I think its best, highest possible use is as a park. And so, I would, my recommendation is to make those changes that I asked for, and see if they work. And if they don't work, then we come back in a year and consider selling it. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Favre's pointed out a parliamentary issue that we have. We have too many councilors in the room at a committee, at a committee meeting. We have a quorum, which is not a good thing. So, a solution that I would, as the city attorney, if we maintain, we have five here, and only two councilors be seated at any time, and maybe go stand outside in the hall? How else do you want to deal with it?
Sure. I would just recommend that all of the councilors be mindful of the conversation that is tonight for the committee's purposes. The committee tonight is working on a recommendation. So, if the councilors do want to speak, it's helpful to ask questions or make points that will help this committee function. But conversations about the matter that goes up to city council, and how they're gonna vote on it, and what they might think about proposed recommendations, there's a venue for that at city council, so we can just pause those until then.
Thank you. Better to be safe than chastised by the city attorney. Better to be safe than chastised by the city attorney later. Okay. Okay, but certainly, members of the public who want to address the committee, now's a good time. Michelle, you're up, and then behind.
Michelle Chalice, 25 Beach. I would simply like to have an acknowledgement that the site has been designed, as, as a 40-year landscape architect, urban spaces need excellent visual access at all times for the public's sense of safety. And I'm embarrassed that a landscape design was done for this park with a berm that completely does not allow visual access into the space, nor does this space connect the surrounding sidewalk to welcome people into the space. So I just want to make sure that we're clear, that this is not a dangerous space just because. If that berm were not there, as has been done very well, both at Pat Russell Park, the adjacent, the very clear Pocket Park, we have excellent visual access. So the berm is a huge factor here, and I just want to make sure that we're not tossing it away. The location has nothing to do with it. It is a great location, so FYI.
Thank you. Yes, in the back, did you want to speak?
Hi, Kristen Petrocola, 256 Beaver Street. I'm the person, I sent a letter to the full council 10 days ago or so about this issue. And in that, in that letter, I expressed concern about the fact that green space is an ever shrinking commodity everywhere in the world today, and we should do what we can to protect it. Now, if I lived next door where people were defecating behind my apartment and there were drug deals happening, to Laura's point, as a concerned parent or community member, that would be really disturbing. I do live at the quiet end of Beaver Street, and we have a lot of disturbing things that do occur on Oak Street, so I'm familiar with the east side in general being a fairly complicated region in our town, unfortunately. That said, I don't, I don't recommend we have a habit of selling property because we can't figure out how to manage it. I just, I know you, nobody's in this room is stupid, so I'm not saying that's where we're going. I just would say, just pause, because the truth is, is I'm a very avid walker, and I walk all around this community, and I've walked through Patricia, Miss Russell's Park, and we got drug deals going on there now. And you walk through there at night, it's not always clean and pleasant. So it's happening everywhere, and to think, again, that we can just sell one and move it, or somehow just shift the responsibility somewhere else, it's, it's going to just shift, and we're going to have more people in Patricia's Park. So I would recommend just slowing it down a little bit and thinking about, yes, motion lights, or actually, you know, fences that really separate, or what Michelle brought up, how about we make it a part, again, I know it's not technically a park, but how about we make it a green space that's more welcoming and more visual? So I, I don't, no disrespect, I just would say, could we slow it down a little bit and look at some alternatives? Because we know the folks that are going to purchase it, right, they've got to keep it safe too. So they're either going to have to totally fence it in, which is going to be really, a really visual disgrace for our community, or they're going to have to start spending money on protecting it. Or what are they going to do? Call the police? Which, they're already going there anyway, so I don't know. I just think we can be a little bit more creative, at least that's my thought. And I appreciate you all. You work very hard, and you're very thoughtful, so thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else want to address the committee? Yes, ma'am.
Hello, Jody Newell. I live on Leverett Street, so I acknowledge that I don't necessarily live right around the corner from the spot, but I will say that, you know, due to unfortunate circumstances, we ended up in a temporary apartment on Church Street, right down the street, for just a little less than a year. And, and I spent a lot of time walking by and riding my bike by there, and I, I, I just, it just blows my mind to have this be a concern because of, you know, that, that experience and, and all of that time and not seeing anything that was in any bit concerning to me. But I will, I just wanted to bring it back because Peter said something earlier, and he talked about the idea of this being a space that was cultivated, that was loved on, that was, that was really, there was a lot of love put into the space. And I just want to share a little bit about, you know, a, a space in my hometown where we did the exact same thing. You know, it was a place where people were shooting up, where teenagers were drinking beers and all that kind of stuff. And, you know, my former fiancee and I used to love to take our dog down there until we realized that there was broken glass everywhere. So after he passed, we adopted that area. We adopted that area and we saved it. That was a space that had been used for something else, but yet we were able to transform it into this beautiful space where members of our community came out. We had a cleanup day, and there were like 60 people there, okay, to come in and plant hostas and plants, you know what I mean, all this kind of stuff or whatever, to rejuvenate it. And I just, I think, I think at the end of the day, the, the points that were made before me are very well taken, and I think that they're very important, is that when we give up public space, there's no getting it back, number one. Also, I don't think that, I don't think that this is an unresolvable issue, and then also I just, I just really want to highlight that, because I think that it was, I think that in some, in some fashion, it was gone over, that this is a, this is a sentimental space. This is a space that people poured their heart and, and soul into because they wanted to, in the same way that, you know, this space, my hometown, Norway and the last, in the same way, they wanted to reclaim it from what it had become. And, and, and learning that about this space, it just makes it that much more personal. And, and I think we really need to ruminate on that. So anyway, that's my thoughts. Thank you for giving me a second.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else want to address the committee? Oh. Good evening, sir.
I just want to make sure.
Name and address.
This is about the parcel at the end of Church Street, Norway and 93rd Street, correct?
Yes.
Your name and address for the minute taker, or your name.
Bitch.
I know who you are.
I know how the system works. I'm Bill Bradford Hutchinson. So far, I'm one of two candidates for mayor this year, as I was in 2023. And this little park there, since I came back to Keene in 1987, I spent most of that time in the downtown area. And that's definitely the downtown area. And I've seen that little area change over the years. A few years ago, there was an individual named Jeffrey Allen. He was known, he was homeless in Keene for many, many years. He adopted that park. He did put plantings into that park, he weeded, he laid out rocks, he knew everybody in that neighborhood, everyone in that neighborhood knew him. That area has one of many areas in downtown Keene that the Keene police have been aware of for, since I've been back in Keene, where people hang out, smoke cigarettes, smoke weed, do alcohol, do drugs, engage in sexual activity sometimes. This is a part that, the underclass, if you will, homeless drunks and junkies. And this is something, if you go back and look at my Sentinel comments 30 years ago when I ran for city councilor at large, I said that I want to be a voice for the homeless drunks, the homeless junkies, for the disabled, for the crazies, for the people whose voice is too often silenced. For the most part, these are good people. When they hang out there, the cops know where they are. If there's a 911 or somebody overdoses, the fire department knows where they are. They're more or less in public. But because of the lack of diversity on the city council, look at Keene City Council, all Democrats, there's people on the Keene City Council in this room who hate homeless people, hate homeless people. They'll never admit it publicly, they'll never say it, but their actions belie their words. And Jeffrey Allen loved owls. When he camped in the woods, everybody knew him as somebody that loved owls. There was owl themes in that park. When there was a sense of community among the homeless drunks and junkies, somewhat like that, they would work to pick up the park. They're also the people that messed it up. There were some that left their beer cans around and their cigarette butts, and other people would pick up their cigarette butts and cans, as long as there was a trash can. For years, the city provided a trash can. When there's no trash can provided by the city, because the city took out the trash can in a short sight of belief it'll make the people disappear, it doesn't happen. Now, they still hang out there, but there's no trash can, so the trash goes all over the place. It's just like with the homeless camps. There's homeless camps all over town. If once in a while, certain homeless camps, the city put out a trash can once in a while and pick it up once in a while, like in the parks, there'd be less trash. So what I'm seeing, this whole issue, is white privilege. We don't want to see those people around here. We don't, oh, they look ugly. That's not what we want in downtown Keene. Nobody wants that. That's the reality of Keene. That's the reality of 2025. That's the reality of what we have. And there's people that don't like that. Oh, not in my backyard, not on my street. Where are those people going to go? Go hang out on the rail trail? Camp on the rail trail? Which is what they're doing? Look at a map of Keene. Look at all the areas in Keene that Keene owns. How much woods is Keene owning Keene? There's no place on city property to have a place where we know there's going to be people there, and that's where they're going to hang out, and the cops know it, and the fire department knows, and people know it. Do they not have rights to public space? Not with white privilege rears its ugly head.
Thank you, Bradford. Thank you. Anyone else want to address the committee? Seeing not. Motion, please.
Move to recommend the city manager be authorized to do all things necessary to negotiate and execute the sale of 100 Church Street, parcel number 574015.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Anyone from the public or committee want to speak further? All in favor?
Oh, oh, oh.
Oh, what?
I'd just like to know that you've checked out the deed of before yourself.
It would.
Make sure that it's a clear deed.
Absolutely. City attorney is on it. Okay, again, for the committee, all in favor? Wow, we have four, and we have one opposed.
Of course.
Surprised? All right. And just to fill it out, now this is referred to the city council, which will be meeting and voting on this, not this Thursday, but the next council meeting, because these minutes won't be ready. And I'm sure there'll be discussion and whatnot. Thank you. Okay. Good to surprise you sometimes. Item five, installation of trail sign identifying the Charles Redfern Bridge from the Bicycle Pedestrian Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Donless here, Public Works Director here tonight, representing Mr. Schaffman, who brought this item forward. So I will do a brief introduction, and I believe there are individuals from the Bicycle Path Advisory Committee here, as well as the honoree himself. So this is a relatively simple request. The Bike PAC has forwarded a recommendation that a sign be placed on the rail trail to, to indicate the state law that was passed officially naming the, what we used to call the South Bridge, as the Charles Redfern Bridge. It's the pedestrian bridge that crosses over 101. There are already signs that will go on the bridge itself that are facing traffic, that facing the vehicular traffic. Those are sort of the official DOT design of dedication signs. We don't have a lot of, of say or creativity when it comes to those official signs, but signage on the rail trail is, is more at our discretion. So the Bike PAC has put forward its recommended design. The intent, as I understand it, is for the "Welcome to thee," that arced text, to sort of reflect the, the gentle arc of the bridge itself, the Charles Redfern Bridge, and then the, the words there you see, honoring the man with the vision and tenacity to create the magnificent multi-use trail system in Keene, here in Keene, New Hampshire. And if there's one word that I think appropriately describes Chuck, it is tenacity. So I, I think that is an appropriate word choice by whoever made that, that wrote that text. I just wanted to point out on the graphic here, and hopefully you can see that's, duh, 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 hang on, laser pointer? Okay, okay, good. So I just want to point out that where we're talking about, this is Route 101 here, this is the rail trail going north-south. Keene State College Athletic Fields are up here in the corner. This would be the backside of the Walmart parking lot, what's the, the tool store there? Harbor Freight. And then, of course, that we have the agricultural fields down at this corner, and the, the EverSource power lines in this corner. So this is the bridge that we're talking about. The DOT signs will go right above the roadway. What we're talking about is a sign on the rail trail, probably about in this area, that would be designed and scaled to be appropriate for bike or pedestrian traffic. I will say, you know, the, the design of the, the sign text itself is very nice. I would like to see this incorporated into the, the Wayfinding sign package designs that we have. We've had prepared for other signs throughout the, the rail trail system, use the same kind of structure, signposts, roof, so it all looks cohesive with the, the other signs, but we would use their suggested language for the, the sign copy itself. So with that, I would, happy to answer any questions, or turn it over to members of the Bike PAC to raise their comments.
Committee, anything for, yeah? No? Okay. Who is representing the bicycle?
Mr. Chair, Ed Haas, 114 Jordan. On behalf of Bike PAC, we fully endorse the signage on the bridge as printed. I had thought we were putting signs on both ends of the bridge, but I'll yield to Public Works Director for that. I know your answer.
Ms. Chair, I think it, it depends on how much money we can raise for the signs.
All right, it's time. All right, we'll, we'll work on that. Thank you.
All right. Okay, Counsel Jones.
Here's Counselor speaking. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Philip Jones, Keene City Council, Ward Five. I'm actually here tonight as a member of the Board of Directors of Pathways for Keene. It was Pathways for Keene that designed the sign and sent it on to BiPAC for their endorsement. You can all see it on your screen. This, this was actually designed on a napkin over breakfast in the pub. It went through the process with, through Pathways for Keene. I was the one that put tenacity, so you can blame me for putting that in there. And Ted McGree helped with some of the wording, making it a multi-use trail system here in Keene, New Hampshire. I think Pathways did a great job. If you look at it and you notice the "Welcome to" is slightly curved, that's done to mimic the curve of the bridge on there. And the most important is, is honoring the person with the vision and tenacity. Otherwise, we would not have the trail system here in Keene, and that's the purpose of this. I would ask that you do not put any logos or emblems on here. Let it tell its own story. And I don't, I'm not sure that means by adding it to the Wayfinder, if that takes away from it or not. I don't know exactly what that means from the Public Works Director, but I hope that we see the full sign. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone, yep, Counsel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I guess that I had taken that to mean that when, when the, the identification of the bridge or the title of the bridge is updated on the Wayfinding signage, it will... it will not have this special font and design. Is that correct?
My suggestion, anyway, is to try to merge the design that came forward with the structure that was designed for the wayfinding signs. So the Guide, Inc., I think is the name of the company that designed these, came up with some typical examples of signage for trailheads, for mile markers, that sort of thing. And one of them is a directional sign or an informational sign that would be appropriate in this sort of situation where the Pathways design would constitute the majority of the sign, but it would have posts, it would have an arced roof over it. There may be some other information like the distance to downtown, for example, that sort of thing that we could include in it. But that copy would be the majority of the sign.
But all that we're talking about now is this one sign?
Correct.
Right, just want to make that clear. Anyone else, committee, public?
Tenacity is Phil Jones. He went before a body of 400 people, legislators, to get this passed. And he also met with senators. So he's the first one I have to thank. I also have to thank the volunteers that have really made this happen. They've generated excitement among the community, political will, goodwill. And I really feel strongly it's the volunteers whose names should also be incorporated into the sign. But that aside, also too, I do want to note that somebody that has given us sustainability of our group is Ted McGree. I noticed he's in the audience tonight. I was going to say this anyways, whether he was here or not, because Ted's been with us for 24 years plus. And without that race, we would not have had the thousands of volunteers we've had over that period of time. So, and that also, he uses that as a message board to push out information as to what the next project is, what they're paying for on that race to be the next feature of our wonderful trail system. So I owe him thanks. I owe Phil thanks. I owe the staff thanks. Don Lusier and Andy Bohannon and the city manager and the city engineer. And I could go on. And Will Schaffman. You know, I mean, it's just amazing. It's an amazing thing. And I want to thank Council for this opportunity for making this happen, too. So thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments, Chuck. Anyone else want to address the committee?
Got to have a rebuttal here. Ted McGree, 115 Main Street, Keene. Yes, I've been on the Board of Pathways for 24 years, but Chuck had the vision with John Summers to look at these rail trails 30 some odd years ago. We put on this race because of his tenacity. He knocks on doors, he gets sponsors, he raises the majority of the money for this organization, which I think, Phil, we're in the vicinity of over $2 million or some sort of crazy number at this point. So really, I'm honored to be in the same room with Chuck, and I'm delighted that we're going to have this sign for him on this bridge. So thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for your work. Okay, anything, anyone further? And Jacob for...
I just want to say before I make the motion that, I mean, this, I'm really glad that I'm the one that gets to do this. For, I think everybody in this room probably knows, but Chuck was Award One Counselor at one point. I don't know if it was the exact seat that I'm in now. I also am Leo F. Redfern, award winner, and so this is meaningful for me as well. Congratulations, Chuck. Move to recommend that the city council approve the attached design for trail signs identifying the newly named Charles Redfern Bridge, formerly the South Bridge, spanning New Hampshire State Route 101, and that the city manager should be authorized to do all things necessary to install the signage on the rail trail.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded by Council Workman. Anything further from the public committee? Seeing none, all in favor? That would be unanimous. I'm looking forward to the festivities when the signs are put up. Can we, do we have a time? How long it's going to take?
Mr. Chair, no. We have not fabricated the sign at this point, so it will take some time to fabricate it and make a plan to install.
Is Public Works making it?
You will certainly be invited.
Public Works making it?
I'm sorry?
Is Public Works making the sign?
No, Public Works won't make this one. We specialize in MUTCD-compliant retro-reflective signs. Anything that is more creative than that is really outside of our wheelhouse.
Got you. Okay, thank you. Were you voted, yes? Did we vote? Yes. Okay, good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, final item on our agenda. You may have heard that there's a downtown infrastructure project coming. I try to remind the public every now and then. Any downtown merchants in the house? Or one? Hey, we got one. Okay, one of the features of this downtown project is a bike lane. And it's been a lot of discussion in terms of how to make this bike lane safe, workable for everyone involved. So the city manager, I believe, or the mayor, appointed a committee.
The manager.
Manager, okay. And the Bicycle Pedestrian Path Group also worked on suggested rules and whatnot about it. So we have, before us, a draft of some recommended recommendations for usage. And Public Works Director, you going to lead us through this?
I would be delighted, Mr. Chair. Once again, Don Lusier, Public Works Director. And once again, helping out my buddy Will Schaffman tonight with the suggested rules. So this actually, as you mentioned, began as an effort about a year and a half ago, as like January of 2024, that we first started having conversations about the requirements to regulate the activity of these new bike lanes that the council had by then approved. So the manager and the mayor got together. They appointed a committee to look at the existing rules, what already existed within state law, how that applied to city ordinances, and then recommend some rules that would govern how people use these lanes once they're built. So this came to kind of a head just recently with the Bike PAC dusting those off and forwarding them to the council to be enacted into an ordinance. I will say tonight, the recommendation that's on the agenda is just to accept their correspondence as informational. You've already, the council has already voted to authorize the manager to draft an ordinance and to bring it forward. That, you know, was already on our docket to do. To be honest, I kind of didn't think that it was an urgent thing because we're still, you know, close to a year before these bike lanes exist. But because Bike PAC recommended that this come forward, we've gone ahead and submitted the draft. So attached to the agenda packet tonight is a draft ordinance, as well as the language that Bike PAC forwarded to you. What I would like to do is go through the 12 items that are on the Bike PAC package of recommendations. And then for each of those items, I'll discuss how those are either addressed by the draft's ordinance or how they're already contemplated within state statute and within the city code. So in that, on your desks tonight, you should have a marked-up annotated version of the Bike PAC letter that'll have a lot of the information that I'm talking about. So number one, Bike PAC recommended, bicycles and other personal vehicles for the purposes of these rules include all as defined by state of New Hampshire statutes. So right now, within RSA 259-6, defines the bicycle, what a bicycle is according to state law. And it does explicitly say that an e-bike is a bicycle for legal purposes. Also, I would point out that RSA 259:122 defines a vehicle. A vehicle includes every mechanical device in, upon, or by which any person or property is or may be transported or drawn upon a way. It is as inclusive of a definition as you could possibly imagine. So that would capture things like scooters, skateboards, bikes, e-bikes, monocycles. All of those by state law are vehicles and fall under the requirements for vehicles. Number two, bicycles should always yield to pedestrians in the bike lanes. Now, for this, I would point out that RSA 265:143, the section of the state law that deals specifically with rights of way, or excuse me, the rules of the road as they pertain to bicycles. That's, Section 153 through 143 through 153? 43, 53? Is a whole section of state laws that deal with the rules of the road regarding bicycles. And it says, "Every person propelling a vehicle by human power or riding a bicycle shall have all of the rights and be subject to all of the duties applicable to the driver of any other vehicle under the rules of the road except as provided in Paragraph 2 and has special regulations in this subdivision and except as those provisions, blah, 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 blah." So what that says is that it's already a state law that bicycles have to yield to pedestrians in the bike lanes or in the crosswalk. So, you know, one of the themes as I go through this is it is not best legal practice to have rules at the state level that duplicate existing state law or, I would suppose, state law that are redundant with existing federal law. The risk there is if the state law changes and we don't also change our local laws, we're going to be in conflict, and that's going to cause legal ambiguity. So where things are already adequately covered by state law, we're suggesting that we not add them to our laws to be redundant. And that, number two, is one of those cases. Number three, bicycles should not park in the bike lanes. Likewise, any vehicle engaged in commercial deliveries should not even temporarily park in the bike lanes, no matter the duration. So bicycle parking in bike lanes is addressed by the ordinance that we're going to go over here in a minute. We've added that in. Vehicles parking would already be addressed elsewhere in the city code. City Code Section 9467 is the part of the city code that just has general prohibitions for parking. It's what says you can't park on a sidewalk, you can't park within 15 feet of a fire hydrant, you can't park within 30 feet of an intersection. One of those rules is that you cannot park on the traveled portion of any roadway so as to obstruct the movement of traffic in the travel lane. I think that would cover the parking on a bike lane. In essence, the bike lane is a portion of the roadway that's dedicated for a specific type of vehicle. Now, if you think that that is too obtuse, then we could add a section in 94-67, another bullet in that to say you can't park in a bike lane explicitly. Either way, I think is acceptable, as far as I'm concerned, but it is adequately covered in my mind, anyway. Item number four on the Bike PAC list, bicycles and other personal vehicles are not to be operated on sidewalks. So right now, this is addressed in City Code Section 94-466. And actually, bicycle use on sidewalks is allowed, except where it's not. And the code lists specific areas, specific streets and locations where bike use on sidewalks is not allowed. According to state law and everywhere else in the city, bike use on sidewalks is permitted. And that would include things like skateboards and scooters and whatnot. We are not proposing to change those rules. So as it's currently written in the ordinance we'll go over, it would still be, there would be no use of bicycles on the sidewalks in the downtown. The sidewalks are still separate. They exist separately than the bike lanes. The bike lanes would be for the bikes, of course. So we're not suggesting any changes to the existing rules that way. Item five, bicycles and any personal vehicle should not exceed eight miles per hour in these bike lanes. As we'll go over in a second, the proposed draft is going to recommend a 10 mile per hour as a maximum. MUTCD has a specific recommendation for speed limits. Of course, admittedly, federal highway is mostly geared towards vehicular traffic. But the suggestion is that, or the guideline is that speed limits only be incremented in multiples of five miles per hour. It's what vehicle operators expect to see. It avoids confusion about what the sign actually means. And that's the recommendation for vehicles. Similarly, or, you know, in addition to, we recently had an opportunity to do some bike trials on Main Street. And I think what we found is that anything less than 10 miles per hour, it actually gets difficult to maintain balance on a bicycle. And there reaches a point where, you know, bikes are stable when you're riding and not when you're still, right? Well, the difference is that the wheels spinning creates that gyroscopic effect and creates stability. When you go slow enough, it becomes very difficult to balance the bicycle, and you get a little wobble in your steering wheel and whatnot. So we recommend that be set as 10 miles per hour. And then finally, the third point on this is that state law does have provisions for the equipment of a bicycle that reference stopping distance at 10 miles per hour. So I think it's consistent with state law to say 10 miles per hour as a maximum reflects what the state law requires for bicycle equipment. And it's consistent all the way around. Number six, helmets are to be, are recommended for all cyclists but are required for persons under 16 years of age. So two concerns with this. Laws are not designed as recommendations. They are either enforceable laws or they are not. So having a recommendation codified in ordinance is not recommended. For the 16 and under crowd, this is already a requirement under 265:144, Subpart 10. No person less than 16 years of age may operate or ride upon a bicycle on a public way unless he or she wears a protective headgear of a type approved by the Commissioner of Health and Human Services. So that is already covered in state law. The next one, 1-4-year-olds, up to 40 pounds, can ride on bicycle that has a harness, sits upright, does not allow feet and/or hands to reach spokes, and is permanently attached to the bike and/or toe. 166144, colon, no, no colon on this one. Oh, it's subsection 1, sorry. Already requires that all users ride, quote, "upon or astride a permanent and regular seat attached to the bicycle." So if the concern for Bike PAC is having a child, you know, being carried by an adult or sitting on the handlebars, that sort of thing, that is already prohibited under state law. They are required to be in an approved seat that's permanently affixed to the vehicle. And it would be pretty easy for an officer to say that is a seat designed for that rider to be sitting in. Number eight, all bicycles and personal vehicles should yield to pedestrians crossing intersections. So there's some problems with this one. That is actually not consistent with state law. So if you come to an intersection and the pedestrian, there's pedestrian signals such as we have here on Central Square, the pedestrian is actually required to stop and yield to traffic when they have a no-walk sign. When they have a walk sign, vehicles are required to yield to the pedestrians, right? So just having a statement that they're required to yield to pedestrians in the intersection would create a conflict with that existing state law. They are, so pedestrians are required to yield to the vehicles when the pedestrian signals are present and they're given the no-walking sign. They are prohibited from crossing diagonally by state law. And then finally, vehicles are actually required in all cases to exercise due care. So I think regardless of what the pedestrian is doing, the vehicles still have an obligation under state law to exercise due care. So besides being potential... Um, so besides being potentially, uh, conflicting with state law, it is also redundant to have that statement in there. So we're not recommending that one be added to, to the code. Um, all bicycles and personal vehicles must obey, must fully obey all traffic control signs and devices. Again, this is another one, RSA two sixty-five colon nine, obedience to any, uh, required traffic control devices, and RSA two sixty-five colon two, required, required obedience to traffic laws, colon, or, uh, semicolon penalty. Um, both of those talk about all vehicles having to obey the traffic laws. Um, so I think it would be redundant to have a, a line in our code that says, "B- bicycles," which are vehicles, "have to obey the law." They already have to obey the law. Um, number ten, bicycles must have front white and rear red lighting if operated between a half hour before sunset and a half hour before sunrise. So this is actually an interesting question. Um, it's not clear to me anyway, because I didn't attend the meeting, if the Bike Pack's uh, request was that this be an additional requirement. So right now, in two sixty-six colon eighty-six, uh, all bicycles, you know, during those hours of darkness are required to have a headlamp and a, uh, rear red reflector. They're not required to have a lamp, you know, a self-illuminated lamp. They're required to have a red reflector that's visible at a distance of three hundred feet when illuminated by a vehicle headlights. Um, in the state law, it says specifically that a red light can be used in addition to a reflector, but not in lieu of. So if the intention is for us to also require a red light in addition to a reflector, you could certainly do that. You have that authority to do that. Um, I would just note that it, it's an additional requirement, and it may be difficult for somebody who's not from Keene to know that this one town has also, you know, that they think they're, they're in good shape, they've got their headlight, they've got their reflector, oh, but when you come to Keene, you also have to have a, an illuminated lamp on your bike. So, um, it, it's really up to the council and the committee to decide whether that's what you want to also require. Um, number eleven, bicycles cannot be left unattended unless placed against a proper bicycle rack. Unattended bicycles, uh, not at a rack, may be removed by city employees. Um, RSA two sixty-five one fifty-two actually allows parking on sidewalks and roadway as long as it does not impede pedestrian traffic. This would be a more stringent requirement, and if that's what, you know, you want to do is require that they be at a bike lane or a bike rack, designated bike la- rack, then that's certainly within your authority to do that. Uh, and finally, all rules and regulations in the state of New Hampshire must be followed. It is the obligation of the cyclist to understand these rules. Already within our city code, we have section, uh, ninety-four colon one sixty-four, excuse me, four sixty-four, that's re- references the relevant sections of the RSA, so it's already written in there that, um, that's the language right now, the, the first rule there. Um, ninety-four, four sixty-four, rules of operation of bicycles on public ways or, or public property shall be as set forth in colon, uh, RSA, RSA two sixty-five colon one forty-three through two sixty-five colon one fifty-three. So that's already in the code. So, all of that said, um, what we're going to recommend and, uh, what you see in your packet is a draft ordinance that we could bring forward to city council, um, that would do the following. That first para- that first line would remain as it is. We would add a B paragraph, and that B paragraph would say, "In addition, the following rules shall apply to the operation of bicycles, unicycles, tricycles, scooters, roller skates, skateboards, or similar devices, including electrically propelled or assisted versions of such devices, on bike lanes and multi-use paths within the city of Keene. One, within the downtown core zoning district, the maximum permissible speed shall be ten miles per hour. Two, where bike lanes are provided adjacent to roadways, cyclists shall only travel in the same direction as the adjacent travel lane. Three, no person shall stop, park, or load any bicycle or other vehicle in such a way as to obstruct the public use of bike lanes or multi-use paths. Four, bicycles and other personal vehicles shall not be parked or left unattended within a, the public way except at a rack provided for such purpose. Five, bicycles must have front white and rear red lights if operated between half hour after sunset and a half hour before sunrise." So as you can see, items, uh, four and five are more stringent, addressing those, uh, requests from Bike Pack or the recommendations from Bike Pack, um, and it's, you know, up to you. So at this point, that is what we're suggesting as staff, uh, the ordinance say, and we would love your feedback on this draft. Um, but this has not been read for, you know, at city council, so the idea is you all discuss it, tell us what you want to see, so when it comes in for its first reading, it'll already be in the format that you're ready to, to bless.
Got a lot of hands kind of twitching around here. Let me just throw you my initial observation. I understand the need and desire for an ordinance. I think that informing the public of the rules, I don't care if it's written in the Constitution, it needs to be easy to understand so the public can get with it gradually. It's training, and I can remember in fifth grade or as a little kid, learning the rules of the road that are logical, that we see a lot of people not doing.
Yeah.
So what I'm going to ask is there's some way that we can have the ordinance with those needed issues as well as, call it a resolution or rules of the road or something that picks up a lot of, uh, what, uh, the bicycle committee brought forth. Although they're redundant, I think it's important to have. We need to train the public what to do. We've got a little time, not a lot of time, because there's going to be bike lane, probably functional, uh, next summer.
From your lips, Mr. Chair.
Right, right, right after Marlborough Street. Yes.
Um, yes, you're absolutely right, Mr. Chair. Um, I know, I, I've raised the point, Will has, has made the comment, I think the city manager's made similar comments, that, that really, we can write all the laws we want, it's going to be a recall, uh, come down to public education.
Yeah.
Um, and, and there will be a learning curve as people learn how to use this new type of facility. There's no question about that. Um, we, we've talked to Rebecca Landry, Deputy City Manager, about how to communicate this, you know, we're thinking about videos and, and that sort of thing that we can put out there as public informational messages. Um, but, but ordinance is something that can be enforced versus education that, that's just going to be an ongoing process.
And I think we need to get started sooner than later with signage and the education and just get it going before somebody gets hurt. Lots of hands that, so you're up first.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have, I have some specific, um, comments, but I, I know that other councillors do as well, and so I'll just start with the general kind of concern. And my concern is that right now, and we heard this tonight, you, bikes cannot be on the sidewalk in the downtown core. And yet, when I am downtown, it doesn't matter the time of day, it doesn't matter the day of the week, I see bicycles on the sidewalk downtown. I don't have a ton of interest in, you know, wasting my time or the committee's time or the council's time or the public's time or staff time coming up with the best version of the ordinance that reconciles all the things, that takes into account the state law and takes into account the, the Bike Pack recommendations and, you know, is a reflection of what the council wants, and then we're not going to have it enforced at all. Um, and then my concern is, you know, the, the minute that we have some kind of pedestrian bike collisions, kind of vehicle bike collision, someone's crossing from the parking stalls, um, the bike lanes are, are, I think you're going to see a drop in public support for them, and so I want to get this right in terms of the ordinance. I also want to get this right in terms of enforcement, and you touched on the education piece. Um, this is also going to come down to enforcement, and it's not being enforced right now, and so I guess that I'm looking for, I don't want to, I want to be careful the way that I phrase this, recognize that I'm one of fifteen councillors, but I would like a commitment from city staff that this will be prioritized as an enforcement priority, more so than it is now.
Thank you. Did you want to speak?
Yeah, thank you.
You're up next.
Yep. Appreciate putting the bike lane rules together, but, um, let's be honest with ourselves, it's a, these are feel-good rules, but they're completely unenforceable. And once again, having ridden with the police last, last Thursday night, I asked three different officers that I rode with, will the police be able to enforce this? And they said, absolutely not. When I rode with them this past Thursday, I rode with them for eight hours, it's stop, have to stop, have to stop, go, 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 every one of them. Um, just trying to, just speeders on Route Nine on the east side and, for any councillor that has not ridden with the police, please do, because it's one thing to see things on paper, which most of us do, it's another thing to go out and experience in reality. Paper and reality are two different things even here in Keene. And the eight hours that I did the other night, even though, like I said, I do this a few times a year, it's an eye-opener. They just barely have the time to go to a call, to a call, to a call. They're buried, and sometimes if it's not an emergency call and you wonder where's that police officer, they're not getting there because it's run, run, run. So once again, I got back to this, what is the enforce- enforceability probability that the police is going to do on the bikes? Zero. Zero, completely zero. They weren't being rude, they said, "We do not have time. We're eight officers short, don't look at us to enforce bicycle laws." So when we put these out, we can say, wow, we did a good job. We didn't do a damn thing. We made ourselves feel good because we put something on paper. To me, paper means nothing. To me, reality means everything, and that's how I operate as a city councillor. And like I said, they weren't trying to be rude, that's reality. That's what they're dealing with. They had better things to do than to see if a bicycle is going five miles an hour or eight miles an hour, or what the horsepower is of, of a, of a e-bike. So when I've heard some comments, well, you know, we're going to have to self-police it, we can't self-police it now. I had a bicycle almost run, my wife, me, and my dog over in front of the Colonial Theater the other day, and when I yelled, "There's no bikes on sidewalks downtown," um, you know, he gave me the middle finger salute and told me right where I could go, and off he went. And so most people are not going to confront people on bikes because that's the exact type of response they're going to be. And let's be, I sat in the light yesterday and watched the girl, and her credit, she's a hell of an athlete, because she was on one of those scooters, and she came flying across this way, and they do not go from a motorist to a pedestrian. She hit that crosswalk and went down Main Street as fast as a bat out of hell. Like I said, I actually give her credit because I would have, I would have been smeared all over the pavement. She took that corner, went down, and got into a lean and went down Roxbury Street without missing a beat, but if somebody had been coming around that corner, they would have been wiped out. The speed and the stealth of these electric vehicles are incredible. They are fast. There will not be anybody enforcing a speed limit on any bicycle or any vehicle on the sidewalks of the bike path. That, for us, is a fallacy, and if we're convincing ourselves that's going to be real, then we're lying to ourselves. Once again, what's on paper and what the reality is on the street are going to be two completely different things. And with that said, as far as the draft ordinance goes, if any ordinance is brought before the committee, in my, in my opinion, if anything with a motor, anything with a motor is allowed on a sidewalk, a bike path, or a bike trail, I'll be voting no on that ordinance. Nothing with a motor belongs on those. The horsepower and the stealth and the speed of these vehicles every year increases greatly, and it's basically the stealth and the speed that they go at. Um, so, you know, no matter what the definition is, when an ordinance comes before this committee, if any motor, with the exception of maybe a motorized wheelchair, is allowed on any of these surfaces, I will be voting no on the ordinance. Thank you, this was my opinion.
Thank you. Councillor Tobin.
Thank you. I completely agree with Councillor Greenwald that whatever we come up with here in terms of an ordinance, there still needs to be a clear communication about the do's and don'ts. Um, and I feel like that kind of goes for the, in terms of the education piece, that needs to happen in terms of both vehicles, pedestrians, and bikers. The one regarding, I forget which number, um, was the one about bikes being parked in, um, different places. I do feel like I really want them to be in a bike rack. I don't want, like, trees covered with bikes, um, which is what we see sometimes now. And I did have a question, and I think we've answered this before, but in terms of scooters, we're talking here about, like, the scooters for fun kind of a thing, but in terms of, um, mobility devices, those are still allowed on sidewalks, is that correct?
I believe that's right, yes.
Okay, because I know, I just, I know that those are often called scooters, so I don't know if there's a, an opportunity to clarify that somewhere. And I guess you may consider in terms of, um, I guess as, I don't know if this is exactly needs to be part of the ordinance, but I feel like it's something that needs to be cleared up. When I was looking at the, um, drawings of downtown, um, and the crosswalks, so there's the, the parking, the bike lanes, and then the sidewalk, right?
Yes.
Yeah. So when people are getting out of their vehicles and crossing the bike lanes, in terms of what the behavior is there, it looks like there are crosswalks drawn on the bike lanes, but I don't know if that's considered part of the roadway or if it would be the same guidelines.
So where the, there's a crosswalk across the road, that, that crosswalk marking will also go across the bike lane to let bicyclists know that they're crossing a, a crosswalk. And in those locations, they, they have to yield to pedestrians in the crosswalk.
Okay, so it's still considered part of the roadway then, I guess, is the, okay?
Okay. It's an open meeting, and city staff wants to hear comments, and this committee certainly does. Anyone want to address this? Anyone else want to address this? I would only say that because it's you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ed Haas, one fourteen, Jordan Road. I'm a member of Bicycle Pedestrian Committee. Um, we started working on this back in January of twenty-twenty-four, as, uh, Public Works Director pointed out, and, um, we hashed out a lot, we looked at a lot of state laws, we looked at a lot of other, uh, cities across the country, a lot of other regulations, trying to find things that were comparable, and there, there's some things out there, a lot of differences, but a few, a few similar. Um, we put together a large packet that we sent into the City Managers Committee, and, um, I'm glad to see that it's come down to, uh, coming into an ordinance. In the meantime, we still kept hashing this out and talking about what, what we could do, and our goal is somewhat specific. Hate to read things here, but I gotta read them. We really have a special situation here.
Timeout, one second. To the city attorney, at what point should, is there a problem with the councillor addressing?
I appreciate the question. I would just again remind the councillor, conversations about the final recommendation that come out of this committee for all fifteen councillors to be having that conversation with you, that's, you have that opportunity at city council. If you would like to provide information that the committee, um, will use in making this recommendation, that wouldn't be something you'd voice at city council, that works too. The reason, just for a little bit more transparency and explanation, um, when there is a quorum of city councillors, which we have in the room right now, there is the opportunity for a meeting of the city council to be formed if a quorum of the members start discussing an agenda item that is appropriate for the full city council to address, so.
Yeah, I'll try to stay out of anything that expresses my, my opinions or directions, uh, just reflect discussions that we had in bicycle pedestrian, stay within the guard rules, and you'll be sure to interrupt me if I vary beyond them.
Thank you.
So the downtown bike lanes, that we call them, are a really special situation where it's a raised bike lane, it's much more like a sidewalk dedicated to bicycles. We don't have a good word for it, we confuse words when we talk about bike lanes, there, we call the sharrows that run up and down, uh, Main Street and Washington Street, uh, bike lanes. Um, wherever we have some kind of marking for bicycles on a roadway, we call it a bike lane. What we're doing in the downtown project is very unique and very special, and somehow we got to work our way towards some verbiage that, that expresses that, that it is unusual. Um, our really, our biggest concern in Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee, Bicycle Pedestrian Path Advisory Committee, is to create a safe environment for the cyclists, for bicycles who will ride, now they ride on a sidewalk, let's give them this special space. But more importantly, almost, um, sorry, that was my opinion, I withdraw that, uh, we have to create a safe environment for pedestrians, which is part of our, our charge on the committee, and for the other users of- and for the other users of the space. So we have to create something that makes everybody comfortable with it. We'll never get there, of course, everybody's not going to be comfortable with it. But through ordinances, through communications, we can get to a point where everybody knows that we're driving for this safe environment that respects everybody's rights to the space. And we can go on and on about incidences we've had with different pedestrians or cyclists or vehicles. Everybody's got an experience, but that doesn't mean we can't go forward with creating something that will be very special, will be a great credit to Keene that we have this kind of thing. I, we talk about enforcement, yeah. It's so hard for a policeman to enforce speed rules on motorcycles, never mind bicycles. Bicycles can dart in and out a lot easier. But the same thing is what we just had the discussion about the airport road, the road down to the water, the wastewater treatment plant. We have to have people being self-enforce that. And I see that a growing factor in all of our decisions, that we look to the citizenry. For we look to ourselves to help enforce these laws. One thing that when something gets written into an ordinance, while, you know, it, it may be very difficult to enforce, it may not get enforced, but it does create a legal environment that there was a law on the books that talked about how someone's behavior should have been. And if something happens that they violated that law with their behavior, then that tilts the legal, the legal side of it, should there be a liability suit. I believe I'm speaking correctly?
That works.
Okay. Sometimes. So that's the goal. So I'm glad to see this ordinance coming forward. The ideas that we put up from Bicycle Pedestrian are to help craft this ordinance. And a couple of them were mentioned by Director that they could be incorporated at the committee's desire. Couple of things that I would just throw some light on is the, where was it? Over here. I mentioned, so in the downtown district zoning, in the downtown zoning district, the maximum permissible speed shall be 10 miles an hour. So that could be something that has to address these bike lanes in particular. Because we can't have a 10 mile per hour speed limit on bicycles that are traveling as vehicles in the streets. That would be different. And I think the intent was to have it on the bike, the sidewalk bike lanes or elevated bike lanes or whatever we're going to end up calling them, rather than having them on the street. Second, just a personal experience, reason you would go to odd numbered speed limits is for exactly the reason that the Director pointed out. People are used to seeing five mile an hour, they're used to seeing 10 mile an hour. And of course, when they see that, they say, oh, it says 10, I'll go 15. Or it says 15, I'll go 20, or whatever it is. But when they see an odd number, it gives them pause, they have to think, they say, what? What, what is this? Where did this come from? I first ran into that many years ago, learning about Walt Disney and Disney World controlled speed limits in the parking lots. And they always made it an odd number, it might have been 17, might have been 11. But they made it an odd number for the purpose of attracting, attracting attention. So, sorry I went on so long, but it's great, we're moving along here. Bicycle Pedestrian Committee looks forward to working further with this ordinance and offering recommendations. The communications piece was a big deal. We, we never expected to get an ordinance written around it because we know the conflicts with state law and so on, do the best we can. But we have to drive communications. I think of it as tourist brochures, advertising, things that we can get out that educate people about what we're trying to do in the downtown area with sidewalk bike lanes.
Thank you. Thank you. Yes, councillor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I guess now having had some of that additional context and having already made my broad comment around enforcement, I, I would like to make a couple of specific comments if I could about things I'd like to see in this ordinance or questions that I have for us to, to consider. First of all, I, I'm not quite as firm in my opposition to the electric bikes or the electric scooters or the electric what have you. Talking about, you know, something other than, you know, assisted mobility devices here as councillor Filio is, but it is a question that I have, have thought about a lot, about whether the, you know, the real, is it really consistent with our intent in, in the downtown district to, you know, have, have electric bikes, have electric scooters that can, you know, be going 20, 30 miles an hour, that to councillor Filio's point can be really quiet, can really sneak up on you. So I, I look forward to some further discussion at, at this committee and I'm sure at full council about that particular piece. Councillor Tobin had brought something up the last time we talked about this, this was months ago at this point, around language that, and I don't think we settled on exact language, but about tricks and about using the bicycles, using the scooters for things other than getting from point A to point B. I didn't see any language in here about that, I thought it was a good point when councillor Tobin raised it the first time. We don't want to, you know, we, we want to create an environment where it's multimodal transportation, not multimodal tricks. I wish I had, I was, I was, I paused because I was searching for something better there, but I couldn't find it. And then my, my final just comment is, I guess that, I guess the challenge for me here with some of the, some of the language that is in the recommendations versus what shows up here is that I understand and I generally agree with the principle that the Public Works Director laid out as far as redundancy with state law and other parts of our code and that sort of thing. At the same time, I'm really hearing a desire from the committee, from the public and from staff for clear communication and clear education. And so I, I wonder if, even if there are going to be, if there were to be some sections that were redundant, is that, is having some of those redundant sections in this particular piece of the ordinance that is specific to downtown operation, is, is that worth it? And what does that trade-off look like? So I, I look forward to continued discussion once we have a draft or, you know, a first official draft ordinance in front of us. But I think there are some big questions that the committee still has to wrestle with here, recognizing that the decision about bike lanes has been made, it was made before I got on council. And it's, you know, the, the will of the community is expressed through the vote of the council and now we need to figure out a way to, to make this work and prioritize safety downtown. So that's, it's kind of where I'm at. I don't know that I have a ton of fully formed thoughts around this, but those are the tricks. And then wanting to have a continued discussion about the electric piece. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I have a question and it all goes to you one way or another. Okay, so this is appearing that this discussion is informational. However, the ordinance needs work. I'm asking for something else. I'm just calling it rules, maybe a resolution or something that is a little more inclusive for the public. Who is going to do this and when?
So the, the ordinance is really meant to create the framework for the rules of the road. But the educational campaign will come after that. So in the, in the committee that was formed by myself and the mayor, we talked a lot about the need for education, also engagement with cycling groups as well. And we've already talked to Rebecca Landry, she came to a couple of those meetings last year, about how we might do that and videos is, is just one way to educate some of these rules. So we're looking to you to set the rules first. We know what the state rules are. We, once the council has set the rules, then we can begin the work of the educational campaign.
So should we expect to see this at the next MSFI meeting as a continuing discussion?
You should expect to see a draft of the ordinance at the next MSFI meeting because we would refer, we'd get an ordinance drafted and it would have first reading at the city council and then that would be referred back to MSFI. I would assume you'd have one or two more meetings while you decide what the ordinance actually looks like. And then it would go back to city council for the final reading and adoption. After that, we would begin the effort of the educational campaign.
All right. So I think probably a lot more discussion. Anyone else want to address the committee? Oh, now hands are. Good evening.
Good evening. My name's Andreas Didannon, 37 Cottage Street. And I'm kind of curious about a, I'd like some clarification about the parking and that the proposal is to mandate that bikes be in some sort of a parking structure. How many of those parking structures will be available?
I don't know that that's correct.
Oh, a...
We don't have a parking structure for bicycles.
A, a bike rack, I'm sorry.
Oh, a bike rack?
Yeah.
Okay. No, I thought you were visualizing a building for. Do we have a number in the plan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So the, the downtown project will construct a number of, I, I don't know the number off the top of my head. But there will be a number of permanently installed bike racks. We've, we've found locations where they'll be out of the way for, you know, sidewalk plows and whatnot, which is, you know, part of the problem now is we have to remove a lot of them during the winter because of, you know, maintenance of the sidewalks. All of the ones that we're going to be putting in will be put in permanently, they'll be out of the way so we can plow the sidewalks and the bike lane, the bike racks will stay there through the winter. I don't know the exact number, but we tried to get basically one bike rack on each city block. So they were distributed throughout the project.
Does that answer your question?
That helps a lot, yeah. Because, yeah, I'm, it's, it's great to, I kind of agree with the, the rule that it, the bike should be on racks, but I just wanted to make sure there are enough of them because that's often kind of a problem. And thanks for the clarification.
Thank you. On a trip to Amsterdam, I, while the mayor's coming forward, I saw a parking garage for bicycles. Wow.
We could build one of those if you'd like, Mr. Chair.
Got a spare 20 million, yeah. Yes. Your honor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I appreciate the kind of thought that the BIPEC committee has put into this. This is a start. Couple of things that I'd like to add some emphasis to. I do believe that their recommendation on eight miles per hour is one that I hope the committee considers. I was a trailer, meaning I rode behind the people that had the speedometers on their bikes so that, because I don't, so I could experience eight miles per hour is completely able to balance a vehicle, a bike. No problem. Go down to six miles per hour, it became wobbly. Just the difference between eight and 10 is 25%. So you're, you're not considering something insignificant, oh, it's eight, it's 10. Here's the thing about it and where I might disagree with some of the comments earlier. We may have difficulty enforcing, but this is about self-responsibility. And I think most of you have expressed, most people have expressed, this is about self-responsibility, whether it's through the education process, I'll come back to what I think is important in that education process. But there's, somebody will eventually be hit crossing the bike lane. It's, it's inevitable, people get hit lots of different ways. Conflicts between people, dogs, pedestrians, whatever it may be. And, and vehicles. The point is, if somebody's going 20 miles per hour, you can judge a difference between an eight mile per hour and something that's twice that, that, that speed. And that's the self-responsibility issue, right? There are always going to be people who have observed that kind of conflict, that kind of accident. Because it's downtown and there are always going to be people there. And the point is, I would be able to perceive if somebody was acting irresponsibly, the difference between an eight mile per hour accommodating the fact that pedestrians will be crossing and the fact that they were accelerating without concern for pedestrians occupying spaces, crossing spaces. That's going to be a conflict between the person who created the accident on the vehicle and the people who were hit. And, and they'll, they'll deal with that in their own ways. I'm not saying this is the city's responsibility. This is individual responsibility and people need to be held accountable if they don't follow the guidance that the city has provided. And I think that perception will be the rule. So I, I think eight miles per hour, you should consider that as the BIPEC folks have suggested. And I, I hope you will. I also think that the committee, beyond the ordinance, needs to insist on signage. I agree that, let's get it on the website, let's promote as much as we can in advance of this. But without signage, it's, it's that point in time. I'm on Main Street, there's a sign that says, here are the rules. Work with BIPEC to identify what are those most important rules, whether they're in state law. But it is all about safety. Many of you are going to be knocking on doors in the next few weeks. I guarantee that the, that downtown infrastructure will be the primary question that you get and that safety is the primary answer for you to deliver. And how we address that with proactive steps is going to be very important to keeping people coming downtown. And that's the motivation here, is to create a safe atmosphere in downtown so that people who are resistant because, oh my God, there's changes, we've got to be able to convey, no, we have taken steps to ensure, to, 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 that safety is prominent in our decisions. So I, I do hope that you'll deal with the, with that, with signage. And I think judging from the Chuck Redferen sign, we've got some signage experts on BIPEC. And then finally, I, I think that this number eight should yield to pedestrians before crossing intersections. I think that's going to be something that you're going to have to continue to talk about. That's, that's not a well-understood statement. So what it means, and again, to convey to the pedestrians that there is a safe protocol in the downtown area. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Councillor Jones.
Thank you. Once again, Philip Jones, Ward 5, City Councillor. Just procedure I want to talk about. Right now, we have a quorum here, so other councillors aren't giving their opinions. And I understand you, you intend to put this out as informational to the city council, which means there won't be any discussion for the city councillors to have. I, I think there should be some other kind of motion that would allow the councillors to speak to this at the council meeting.
Or I will speak with the manager and attorney about a workshop, which is a vehicle where everyone can speak. But we can talk about that later.
Um, just for clarification, Phil, even though something is recommended is informational, the mayor still has to bring it up tomorrow night as we're accepting this as informational. But you can still raise your hand in the comments, still communicate on the council floor. Informational doesn't kill it, it just means ask where it's going, but any councillor can pull it off the floor at a council meeting. It can still be discussed.
Just a clarification, it won't be tomorrow night, it'll be the council meeting after.
Yeah. It's too, okay, anything else, anyone else? Oh, we got two hands now.
Ted McGeer, 115 Main Street, Keene. I am a raving fan of alternative transportation opportunities in this community, I have been for 30 years. I make my living on putting shoes on people to go use all these trails and, and avid cyclist as well. I, I have to say that, I don't want to speculate, but I'm going to speculate that each one of us here would agree that cycling on the sidewalks right now is not safe. that each one of us here would agree that cycling on the sidewalks right now is not safe. Um, that's why we have rules in place for not riding on the sidewalk. And so if we paint a green stripe on the sidewalk, is it now safer? Is the, that's the question. Counselor Fablis, you talked about losing public support for the bike lanes. And my fear and my concern, having talked to thousands of people about this infrastructure project, which is taking my days away from me, is that we've already lost that. The safety issue here with this raised path coming down Main Street, ending, is a major concern for people. And to the mayor's point about reaction time, cognitive abilities to see somebody coming eight miles an hour versus 20 is really all as good as the eye of the beholder. And if little Mrs. Thompson gets out of her car, she can't react as quickly seeing somebody coming 20 versus eight. You know, I, I'm just nervous about it and I, I don't disagree with Counselor Filio. What are we gonna have, bike police there with radar, seeing who's going 12 and, and stopping them? I, I mean, how do we, how do we enforce this? So, um, as a downtown merchant, um, I thank all of you for having a, a deep passion for the, for the, um, the beautification and the, the changes for downtown. I just can't in good faith support the bike lanes and I know it's too late, but I just can't do it.
Thank you. Deb?
Hi, my name's Deborah Macri and, um, I'm kind of an imposter up here. I've had a business on Central Square for 42 years, but I live at 286 McLean Road in Lost Elsted. And, um, I agree completely, thank you, Ted. Um, he said mostly what I wanted to say, except for, um, avid cyclists are not gonna use this bike path. They don't now, they won't, they use the bike path so they ride in the traffic on Main Street or they go around, we have plenty of streets to go around Main Street. Um, I don't see any need for this and I think it's a real accident waiting to happen and I am totally against it. I love that we have to do, I mean, I don't love, we have to do this infrastructural thing, I totally support that. We have to do it and so that has to happen. We've been in this mess before as businesses downtown and that's fine. But as far as having, uh, people get out of their cars, cross a bike lane to a sidewalk, to me, I just think it's just, we're looking for trouble and I'm also in agreement with Mr. Filio. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else want to address the committee? Seeing none, please.
Are we ready for a motion? I move to recommend that the list of suggested bike lane rules by the, by the Bicycle Pedestrian Path Advisory Committee be accepted as informational.
So, motion's been made and seconded, anything from the public committee? All in favor, that would be unanimous. And that brings us to the end of our agenda. However, uh, just a reminder to all the counselors present, uh, Thursday, we have a site visit on Grove Street at five, five o'clock, the bus leaves and six o'clock dinner and seven o'clock, uh, council meeting. All the items that were discussed this evening will appear on the subsequent council meeting, uh, to give the clerk's office time to, uh, do the minutes and such. All that's done, I thank all those that came, all those that watch at home and the city staff, of course. We are adjourned, thank you.